The March 22nd, 2018 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Associate Pastor John Cordero, Worship and Creative Arts Pastor of Grace Creek Church, Longview, Texas. Please rise.
Let's pray together. Jesus Christ, we just thank you for this opportunity that we have to live in such an incredible nation, God, where we can have peace, God, we can have justice, God, and that we can be heard. Lord, we thank you for the word that you've given us through the Bible, God. We thank you that we can have a moral compass for our lives, God, in your Holy Spirit. Jesus, we pray for your peace, God, for patience, and God, we just pray for your spirit and your presence here today. It's in Jesus' name we all pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, in our employee recognition, we're going to recognize Planning and Zoning MPO. Tonight, we will recognize staff from Planning and Zoning and Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. Together, divisions manage all programs related to land use and transportation planning for the city of Longview. Last fall, the city of Longview was recognized by the Texas Chapter of American Planning Association with a certificate of achievement for planning excellence. This award recognizes cities for exhibiting professional planning standards, increasing awareness of planning efforts, and aiding in economic development and community image. Planning and zoning staff has been active in coordinating the comprehensive planning advisory committee, historic preservation, creation, and implementation of two small area plans, ongoing work with consultants, and a unified development code, and a tax increment reinvestment zone. Longview's MPO is in the final months of finalizing a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the city of Longview, a comprehensive transportation network of sidewalks, multi-use pathways, and other pedestrian and bicycle facilities. This work has included considerable citizen outreach efforts, including public open houses, several stakeholder meetings, and a survey that received an impressive number of responses. Longview's MPO is responsible for the administration of the area's transportation planning activities and includes portions of Gregg, Harrison, and Upstate Counties and cities. Joining us tonight are Angela Choi, Thomas Kern, Byron McBride, Sharon McCord, Karen Owens, Macy Wyers, and Michael Shirley. Please come forward. It's like the who's who of the planning organization, isn't it? What a great job both these departments do for our community. Like it says right here, "Making Great Communities Happen," that's really what happens. You all make great communities, and we're a great community. Longview's a great community, right? And so, you all are what makes this happen, and this is a certificate of achievement for planning excellence presented to you all. I'll give it to you all, and you all can pass it around. But what I want to just basically say is this: I know our MPO meets with Karen and you all, and I don't always make those meetings, but I try to, but do you realize how important our MPO is as far as the future long-range planning of our community and our transportation needs? Because if you don't realize how important that is, you should come to a meeting or two, and you'll see just how important that is, just like our Development Services. It all meshes together. One works with the other, and it's a really great symbiotic relationship between the two departments. And we appreciate you all as council members. I know the citizens appreciate it, although they don't realize all that you do. We'll make it more and more aware of what you do. So, thank you all so much for what you do, and we appreciate you very, very much. We appreciate y'all's service. Y'all are awesome departments. Thank y'all. Tonight, a little bit different tonight in community recognition. Typically, I will have someone from our community that I will come in and recognize, and they don't know that I'm doing it, and it's always a lot of fun, because the majority of people that do things for our community do so because they do it out of the goodness of their heart, and they do it because they believe in something or they want to do something, and they don't necessarily look for accolades. So, tonight, I'm recognizing our Homeless Resource Day, and I'm recognizing the people that have stepped up and are making this happen, from our departments, from Laura, from the city staff, which we always expect that from you guys, but you all never seem to disappoint us, and you always exceed our expectations, and we appreciate that. If you all could see how many agencies and booths that we're going to have here, it's incredible. And look on the screen here. The community's support for this has been phenomenal, and I'm so impressed. We put a little thing out on Facebook asking for some donations, and before you know it, we got enough water to water the Sahara Desert. I mean, it's just amazing what citizens of Longview have done. So, tonight, my community recognition is for our community, because I appreciate your response. I appreciate your call when we ask, and the fact that you always step up and you give, and we give, and we give, and we give. And remember what we're giving for, because this is a really important thing that we're doing, because we're helping those that need it the most. And so, I hope that you all will see what the community has done, and we still have people out there continuing to give and donate and deliver, and it'll continue all the way until the event on Saturday. So, I hope you all will consider joining us. It's Saturday from 7:00 to 2:00 at the fire training facility at Teak Park. We've got so many people doing so many things for our homeless population that we will make a difference on Saturday, and it's going to be a joy to see, and it's going to be fun to be a part of. And the community, it's not too late to donate. We still need a lot of items that we're giving away, that we're providing for them. If you need to know what those items are, go out on my Facebook page, and you'll see them written down. We've listed them, and I appreciate your response, and your response has been, once again, a joyful giving heart. This is the community we live in. We live in a go-giver community, so I appreciate it. That's my community recognition this week, because I really think that sometimes you just need to say thank you and just realize who all is involved, and I mean, it's the whole community. So, once again, thank you very much. Give yourselves a hand. Citizen comment. I do have one card tonight, Ms. Shalonda Adams.
Good evening. Greetings, Mayor Mack, and to all our council members, and to our great city of Longview, Texas, tonight. I want to thank Councilwoman Snotty for the invite to come speak tonight, or the encouragement to come speak tonight. I am Shalonda Adams. I am the Pine Tree ISD Pace Campus Principal, as well as Student Services Director. With me, I have Dr. Valerie Baxter, who is Assistant Superintendent at Pine Tree ISD as well. We wanted to bring to your attention this week that it is National Youth Violence Prevention Week, being honored, recognized, and promoted throughout the United States of America. Pine Tree Pace Campus has their own chapter, Pay Safe Promise Club. Pay Safe Promise Club, it became a combination of the Sandy Hook Promise, which we know what happened in Sandy Hook about five years ago, as well as Students Against Violence Everywhere. They've been an organization for over 20-plus years. In Pine Tree ISD, this is our third year of recognizing this week and doing intentional activities promoting anti-violence and violence prevention in our, not only Pine Tree ISD, but throughout our city. And tomorrow, we have a day called Unite in Action Day, which is also a national day that's a part of the movement, Unite in Action Day. And that day, young people and adults come together for a community service project. The project that we've chosen this year, we are writing hope notes. We're writing hope notes to Florida, Parkland, Florida, to Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. It is our endeavor that each student and adult in that high school receives a note of hope, love, and encouragement from some citizen, a member of Longview, Texas, and the surrounding area. So, we present to you guys tonight that we need your help. We have the cards. This movement has already started. Even today, at the Women in Longview event, they promoted it, and the women were able to sign the cards, and we'll be leaving here, going back to Pine Tree, and the cards will be signed. We have templates all throughout the city already, New Diana, other school districts participating. So, that is why I come to you guys tonight. Tomorrow, it'll be twofold. We'll have students from Pine Tree ISD, Spring Hill ISD, and Longview ISD. This will be our second year that we have done this action. They'll be coming over to Pine Tree ISD, and we'll have our Unite in Action Day, a day of empowerment, and then a day of action and involvement. So, tomorrow, the students will be contributing to the writing hope notes. We'll write their hands, fingers off tomorrow, but also, we'll be having them plan a Longview Youth Violence Prevention Day, and we'll ask them, "What do you want to have it?" We'll let them lead out on it. And so, that's where we are, and that's why I've come tonight, to present that to you. And any way that you council think that you could help promote us, promote this, we have 4,000, we need 4,000 notes. However you guys think you can help us promote this, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have no other speaker cards. Would anyone care to speak and fill out a card afterwards? Very well. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, I have just a few things tonight. There we go. I'd like to remind everybody, tomorrow at 10:00 in the training room over at the Police Department, we'll be having a commissioning ceremony for our three newest officers. Christina Payne, Ryan Furkel, and Cody Sprayberry will be commissioned as officers tomorrow, and would like to invite anybody that would like to come to that commissioning ceremony to please come and take part in that ceremony. I'd like to mention this again. I know I mentioned it in my last update, and I mention it again this update on the IRS scam that's going around. It's tax time, and I mention it again, because I personally got two phone calls informing me that an officer, Ryan Smith, had my case file, and I needed to contact him in reference to some issues and some warrants that I had with the IRS. I just want to remind everybody that these are robo-calls. They sound intimidating, but the IRS will not call you for information. They will send you a letter with a contact information for individuals to contact. So, please, you know, the more we can get this information out, the more people that become aware of it, hopefully, no one will fall to the scam that's going on with this particular one that's going around. And also, I'd like to ask everybody to save the dates for Giants of Law Enforcement. A tribute to the law enforcement agencies of Gregg County that'll be held May 15th at ModCom. The doors will open at 6:30. Anyone interested in tickets can contact Karen Grisham at the Longview Police Department at (237) 1100, and the ticket price is $15, and we'd like for everybody to come out and enjoy the night, as we recognize and those officers that are department award winners from the agencies in Gregg County, but more importantly, is we also pay tribute to the fallen officers of Gregg County as well. So, everyone's welcome, those that are interested. We'd love to have you come.
What time was that, chief?
Doors will open at 6:30.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Tillman.
Thank you. Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things from the Fire Department since you left for that. First off, I'd like to invite you to attend a recognition ceremony honoring Battalion Chief Wayne Oldham, who will be retiring from the city next month officially, with 28 years of dedicated service. We'll be holding a reception in his honor on Friday, April the 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at our Fire Department Training Center. It's open to the public, and we certainly hope you'll turn out and wish him well on his next venture in his life. Our swift water rescue team last week during spring break, while a lot of people were off relaxing, they were taking the time to go up to the broken boat area to do some training, since the water's running so well up there, and it presents a lot of the challenges that these guys typically meet when they're responding for real somewhere in the state or even here locally, to test their skills out. And this is what they do, this to hone themselves, to make themselves sharp, so that when they do have those serious responses, they're better prepared to deal with that. And lo and behold, while they're up there doing the training, they actually got to perform a rescue of four buddies that, I think two of them were from the Austin area, two of them from the San Diego area, that were canoeing and had gotten knocked out of their canoes. All their equipment had washed on downstream, and three of them made it to shore, and one of them was actually stranded out in the swift water. So, lo and behold, there's our swift water guys that were there training, right place, right time to get the rescue, and then spent the next several hours going downstream, helping them try to get their canoes back, and all their gear and everything that had washed further downstream. So, that trip really paid off. So, anyway, that was a good story. Guys were real thankful. They didn't get all their possessions back, and they did lose one canoe that got wrapped around a tree, but for the most part, everybody was safe, and they didn't really lose anything that couldn't be replaced. Speaking of swift water, our rivers around here and creeks are still somewhat in flood stage. They'll continue to be that for some time, and I just wanted to throw this reminder up there again, that if you do encounter standing water in a roadway, not really, not so much in the city, because our drainage system's working so well, but in the periphery of the city, not to drive through that and obey any barricade or signs that may be up. And I tell you that, because we are expecting some additional rain and storms to move in first of next week, and the rivers and the creeks just aren't going to tolerate it very well, and it's going to very quickly back up into the roadway. So, just be on the lookout for that as we enter into the early parts of next week. And finally, I'll just throw that reminder out there for our Code Red Weather Warning System one more time. It's a free service that the city offers, and we strongly encourage you to go to the city's website and sign up for that if you haven't already. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Tillman? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before we go any further, I just want to, personal note here, these, our two chiefs get up every council meeting, and they give us public safety updates, and we appreciate that, because it lets the community be involved with what you guys are doing. But you know what? What you guys do is you get up and you talk about things that are good for the community, but you don't talk about what you do very often. And I'm going to talk about what you do for just a second, okay? Because I have personal knowledge of two incidences that have taken place, and both of your teams have been amazing. The accident that happened on McCann Road with the pedestrian that was hit, I was actually witness to that accident and was there on the scene with the fire and the police officers that came to the rescue and took care of this lady, and I'm proud to be part of y'all's team. You did a fantastic job, both people involved, both agencies. And also, the shooting incident that took place in front of Jason's Deli, you all know that you saved that girl's life. She would not have survived had it not been for the police and the fire response that came to her rescue. And you don't often toot your horn, but I'll toot it for you, because I was a witness to both of those. So, you guys have done a great job with our police and fire, and I appreciate you very And I know for a fact, those are two lives that were saved that I can verify. So, thank you all. You make a big difference. Okay, on to consent agenda. Any items council would like to place on separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item, Consider Resolution Approving Reduction of Rates Charged by Atmos Energy. Mr. Finley. So approved.
Yes, this is one of the few times I get to say, "We're going down. It's going south instead of north." Effective January 1st, 2018, Congress changed the federal income tax laws, and therefore reducing the corporate tax rate from 35% to 21%. Atmos MidTex and Atmos Pipeline are, we're going to try to get those decreasing that tax burden to the ratepayers as soon as possible. So, bring this resolution to decrease the, you would approve the Atmos reduction by, it's about $29 million, and consent to the pipeline, Atmos Pipeline, for another $29 million. On average, it would decrease a residential customer's bill about 6% in their base rate. So, recommend approval.
Any discussion from Mr. Finley?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Finley. Consider Resolution Directing Development Services Statute, Prepare a Service Plan for Sending Full Nips of Service to Areas Located in ETJ. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. Staff has received a request for annexation of approximately two acres of land situated within our extraterritorial jurisdiction, also known as our ETJ, located directly adjacent to our city limits, located at the northeast intersection of Judson Road and George Ritchie Road. Staff is requesting that city council enact a resolution directing staff to prepare a service plan for this area. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any question, Ms. Choi, on this? Excellent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider a resolution for another ETJ extension on city limits. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. Staff has also received an additional request for annexation of approximately 31 acres of land, also situated within our ETJ, directly adjacent to our city limits, located at the northeast intersection of Loop 281 and Eastman Road. Staff is also requesting city council enact a resolution directing staff to prepare a service plan for this area. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any question, Ms. Choi?
Does the city have the certificate for this entire 31 acres for service of water and sewer?
No, sir. The majority of the property is within city limits, or the city of Longview, CCN. Now, there is a small portion, about a little over two acres, that is in Tryon Road's certificate, CCN.
So, they would be required to service that two acres unless they released it to us?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And so, with this service plan, we have to study that area and contact Tryon Road.
Thank you.
And let me just be clear, Ms. Choi, these are both requests to us. We're not going out.
Yes, sir. These both are voluntary requests. We've received paperwork from the property.
Just wanted to make that very clear.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Wow, this could be a record. Items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
Just want to remind everybody, Saturday, April 21st, a historical marker workshop jointly hosted by our own Planning and Zoning Department and the Gregg County Historical Commission to cover topics that include how to get a historical marker, what the process is, what the criteria are. It's at 10:00 a.m. in our Development Services Office on South High, and the phone number is on the screen if you want to make a reservation. So, encourage you to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. I think I have some pictures, maybe? Yeah. Attended the opening of the Green. Great day. Yeah, as you can see, that's me trying to deliver a welcome, but we had an awesome time. As you look at Kim, she was that way all day long, I believe, excited. Great turnout. I was only able to attend the morning side, but I did see comments and hear people speak about how awesome it was. I did get an opportunity to walk around and see most of the neat things that they have out there. So, it was a great day. Haven't had a chance to stand on the turtle yet, but I am looking forward to doing that. So, it was an awesome day. Oh, yes. Town Hall meeting, just a reminder. Wednesday, April 4th, 6:00 p.m. Hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Where are them at for school?
Yes.
Got it.
601 Garfield.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. White.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the Green, by the way. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. On my agenda today, I am speaking about the development of the park, the playground at Teak Park, and it's under construction, as you can see there in the photos. I went there today to take a look, so there's still a little further development that needs to be done with it. The surface hasn't yet been placed, but it should be done here real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
I believe I have, yes. I just wanted to invite those that haven't seen it, that there will be a 2018, for the very first time, Longview Wine Festival. It is happening at our brand-new green outdoor venue there, which will be beautiful, and it is a fundraiser for the new East Texas Alzheimer's Alliance, which is a very important new nonprofit group that'll be raising funds to help individuals and families that have been diagnosed with Alzheimer's or dementia. We have several support groups now, and we have a long-term goal of having a day respite center for those individuals and families to take part with, and this is our first step in raising funds for that. It's also going to be a great event for Longview, and we anticipate over 3,000 people attending, so please come out, have a good day.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, I'd like to recognize a group and an individual tonight. I think I've mentioned them before, and I'm glad we have a couple ladies from Pine Tree here tonight. Pine Tree Soccer Team cleans the roads from, I believe it's from H.G. Mosley out to Highway 80. This is some of the trash they picked up over spring break, and I had a picture of some trash that was already back out on the highway a week later, but it wasn't a very good picture, so we didn't put it in. But in spite of that, these guys come back three or four times a year and pick it up and clean it up, and apparently don't get discouraged about that. I also want to recognize, I'm sure a lot of you know him, Julio Areola from Cavenders. Julio cleans up a section, has taken it upon himself to clean a section of Spring Hill Road, kind of between the baseball field and the elementary school. He claims it's because one night he was coming around the corner there, and the sidewalk was kind of overgrown, and he almost hit some of the students, the athletic, or the cross-country team students. So, he cleared brush back from the sidewalk, and he keeps the sidewalk cleaned up, and he does it on his own. He loads up his lawnmower from his house and goes up there and cleans that up. So, I just want to thank Julio for his efforts to help around the community.
Excellent. Mr. Purtle.
I want to thank Ms. Dorgy for the Green, if I can speak here, and I want to thank Laura Hill for getting the rocks moved. My wife was ecstatic when she found that out.
Scott, Karen, they all know that.
Okay, because she was definitely worried about that, especially after my grandsons went through there. And I want to thank Mrs. Ishihara for taking on this dementia Alzheimer's deal. I'm going through that right now, and that's a very worthwhile thing to go through, and people that have not been through that do not understand what impact that has on everybody in the family and the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purtle. Mr. Bonds. Okay, I have a few things here. As I mentioned earlier, our Homeless Resource Day will be held this Saturday, March 24th, at the Longview Fire Training Department Center at Teak Park. In one day, a person experiencing homelessness can find and enroll and receive service that would otherwise take months to secure. Breakfast is being provided by Chris's Good Shepherd, and lunch will be provided by Jesus' Burger. See all the groups who will offer services on Sunday or Saturday, and to visit the Longview Transit Shuttle schedule, visit longviewhomeless.com. City offices will be closed Friday, March 30th, for Good Friday. Trash collection and recycle will stay on the same schedule, will not be affected, as usual. Those guys are the workers. Unbelievable. Longview Green and Clean, happening Saturday, April the 14th, is a partnership between the City of Longview Recycling Program and Keep Longview Beautiful. To see a list of the items that can be recycled during Longview's Green and Clean, visit There are several upcoming events throughout the community. Downtown Live, man, I'm glad that thing's back. It's our free concert series at Heritage Plaza will kick off again on April the 6th at Dag Nabbett, continuing every Friday through May the 25th. Memorial Day weekend will feature a Downtown Live Double Shot with a concert on Friday night, May 25th, plus an extra Downtown Live on May 26th, featuring the Big Pine Blues Festival Junior Showcase. Foods trucks will be on site, and beverages available for purchase. You know, that Downtown Live is just getting better and better and better, and I'm so thankful that Heritage Plaza and the 100 acres of heritage in our city and our CVB have taken this on, to make this a really, it's a look-forward-to event now in both the spring and the fall. So, congratulations to all those involved, and look forward to seeing you there. The Gregg County Historical Museum is proud to welcome Dalton Day to Downtown Longview on April the 7th. This year's event is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Fredonia Street with the first of four reenactments of the infamous bank robbery. Entertainment will include several local bands hosting on a stage in front of Citizens National Bank. Now, if you haven't been to this, you should go to this as well. If you've been once, go again, because it changes a little bit every year. The reenactment is phenomenal, and they do such a good job. The people that come out and do this, this is a real passion, to get dressed up and to reenact and do the things it takes to create this. It's a labor of love, and I appreciate the effort that goes into this. It's great for our history and our heritage, and I hope it continues. Thank you all so much. We're going to follow that up with Weird Al Yankovic's. The Ridiculously Self-Indulgent Ill-Advised Vanity Tour will make a stop at the Beltrier Center on April the 20th. Man, that guy's been weird for a long time. And he's great. If you've never seen him, he really is entertaining, so I'm glad to see him, to be at the Beltrier Center. For more information on any of these events, please check our calendar at visit longviewtexas.com, or for city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calendar. Okay, scholarship. Once again, the scholarship must be in by March 30th. Okay, scholarship, once again, the scholarship must be in by March the 30th, we're almost there, so seniors from the four high schools, $2,000 apiece, this is, this is an exciting time, and it's the simplest of all applications, fill out a one-page application, write a one-page report on what you think about makes City of Longview great, or how you can make it better. We'll evaluate those things, we'll have the announcements made the first week or so of May, so I look forward to the application, look forward to reading them, and take the time, do it, it's $2,000, it's a start to your college education. Before I get to the survey, I want to make another comment. Because, we say it all the time about we live in a go-giver community, because we really do, and I'm so proud that we do live in a community, and I love when I see instances that take place during a day that I just think, wow, it just, lights come on, and what I'm talking about is, one day I was having lunch at a restaurant in Longview, and there was some police officer sitting next to me at the table, and I'm always gonna buy their lunch if I can, because I just admire what they do, and I'm so proud of the firemen as well, because I think they just, they deserve all of that, they deserve to know that people recognize what they do. So I asked my waitress, I told her I wanted their ticket, and you know what her response was? "We're sorry, someone else has already got their ticket." And you know what? That is fantastic, and it makes my heart just jump when that happens, and so, you know, once again, I just think that is, that's the society that we live in, in Longview. It may not be that way everywhere, but you know what, it is in Longview, and I want to continue to prosper that attitude, because it catches on, and when it catches on, we become a better community and a better society, so I just want to say that I do appreciate the people that do stand up and take notice. Okay, survey time. We are hosting our city's first homeless outreach fair on Saturday from 7:00 to 2:00. We reached out to the community requesting items distributed that day. How many people do you think answered the call? Well, I gave this one away, because it's just been, well, the answer's 125-plus, I mean, 73% said that, because we've had so many, if you could just see my Facebook page, the people that have said, "I'm gonna bring this, I'm dropping this off, where can I deliver this, how can I get this done, I've got gift cards, I've got money, who will go shopping with me?" It's phenomenal, it's just an amazing response to people, because we care, and so, I really appreciate it, and I know the people that'll be involved in this will appreciate it as well, and all the volunteers, people are gonna be there cutting hair, it's just, it's gonna be great, and I hope you all can find time to come, Saturday, from sometime between 7:00 and 2:00, and just step in and just see what we're doing, because Longview is moving in the right direction in this deal, so thank you very much. Okay, next question. You know, I'm getting my garden ready. Do you think tomatoes like wetter soil or drier soil? What do you think? Well, the survey said wetter, 43%, 57% said drier. Here's what you should remember, tomatoes do not like wet feet, okay? I was told this while I'm buying my tomato plants at Iranian's last week, and the gentleman, you can tell he's a farmer, I am not a farmer, I'm not dressed like a farmer, don't look like a farmer. He was dressed like a farmer, he looked like a farmer, so when someone who dressed like a farmer, looks like a farmer, tells you how to plant something, you better listen. And he said, "You're not gonna plant those already," and I said, "No, sir." Uh-uh, I'm just buying them because they look good. When should I plant them? Not till it gets dry, tomatoes don't like wet feet. There's where my survey question came from, right there, so there you have it. Okay, before we adjourn tonight, I have one question to ask you all. I was posed this question this week, and I don't think I'm crazy, how many of y'all know what a welcher is? Does anyone know what a welcher is? Okay, what is it, Mr. Purtle?
Somebody that sponges off of you.
Or, when it comes to a bet.
Doesn't pay their bet.
They don't pay their bet, okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing my mind. This was presented to me last week like I didn't know what I was talking about, and I thought I did, so thank you all for indulging me on that. That's all there is to it. We're adjourned.
I mean, you're not.
You're not.